Now Haversham is proud to sponsor interviews with the candidates for the May 24th political primaries. We hope by viewing these personal interviews, you'll get to know the candidates who will be making decisions that impact your life, your family, and your livelihood here at the local and state level in Georgia. We hope you'll vote May 24th, and we hope you'll be more informed in that process by hearing from the candidates themselves in these one-on-one interviews sponsored by Now Haversham. Hi, this is Now Haversham. I'm Dick Stafford. We're visiting this afternoon with Locke Arnold, a candidate for County Commissioner, District 5 in Haversham County. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good to see you, Locke.
Good to see you.
So let me ask you a few questions. Let's start with your education. Tell us a little bit about your formal education or even informal education during your life that maybe has prepared you for a position on Haversham County Commissioners?
I'm a graduate of Haversham Central, 1975. Marine Corps for six years, went through all their schools. Search and recovery diver. As far as college, I have none. I went to the trade school from '77 to '79 in small inch, but as far as a college education, I don't have any. I went into business in 1982, and I'm just a self-taught person. That's all I am.
But surely there are great things you have learned from the business you had and from the diving experiences you've had that would be applicable to you as a leader of the county?
Absolutely.
Some personality traits, things like that. Tell us a little bit about that.
Well, when you're self-employed, you don't get paid unless you make the money. That's the first thing I learned very quickly. Over the years, I've established a 4,000-plus customer base. A business will not survive without a customer base. Take care of your customers, and they'll take care of you. And I've been doing it for 30 years. In fact, May 2nd will be my 30-year anniversary where I'm at right now today at 127 Rennie Hames Road. I'm just a self-taught welder, and I just got on it. It was kind of a little knack, and I enjoyed doing it, and one thing led to another. I was working here and working there. I worked at Massacre Ferguson for a while, and I just had a welding shop in the back of my shop, and I started coming home, and there was something laying there to do, and it just grew and grew. Started at Alex Mountain, then I went to, on the other side of Alex Mountain, then I went to Clarksville, and then I've been out there where I'm at for 30 years. I'm just self-taught, not a very highly educated person, but I'm very business savvy because I have been self-employed, and you've got to do something right if you're going to be in it for 30 years. I'm the oldest running welding shop in Haversham County.
Great. We have seven municipalities in Haversham County along with the county government. And I've lived here almost 30 years, so in that time, there have been periods where these entities did not get along that well and were even at odds with each other. But in the past few years, it seems that the relationship has improved. Tell me a little bit about what you foresee for the future if you're elected as District 5 County Commissioner in terms of the different government agencies within the county along with the Haversham County Commission. What are some things we can work on together? How do you perceive gelling this team so we can make progress for the people of Haversham County?
Transparency is everything. The single most damaging thing that ever happened that destroyed the confidence with the people of this county and the commissioners is when they went behind the backs of those people in 2007 and paid a million-plus dollars for a piece of property and didn't tell nobody about it. And now we're about to take a half a million-dollar hit. And it's more than that. You figured out the engineering and stuff like that. That destroyed the confidence of the people. Is the confidence coming back? Yes, but you see the way Alto has went, Baldwin, Cornelia, they stepped out on their own, and I don't blame them a bit. We're about to take a half a million-dollar hit. A commissioner, if you go around sneaking behind the backs of people, that's not going to work. I believe in transparency. I believe you'll never see me do anything until I talk to the people that I serve. This going behind the walls and shutting the door and say, "Listen, we're elected. That's what you elected us to do." That's fine and well, and they have that right to do so. But under no circumstances did they have the right to purchase a piece of property and spend a million dollars of our money just because they have a, you know, I mean, who's going to pay for it? The taxpayers. And transparency is everything. That's all there is to that.
Let's talk about the old courthouse. This would be the middle courthouse, not the old, old one, but the more recent old one. We do have some administrative offices there. What is your take on what should happen to that building? What is your thought about that? Because a lot of people are talking about that right now.
The city of Clarksville is in a change right now. The building, some people say destroy it, some people say this, and some people say that. That building can be salvaged. Is it a beauty queen? No. But my personal opinion, you go buy the Old Engels property, retrofit it, move all the administrative services out there, tax office, code enforcement, sheriffs, everybody, anybody and everybody, you take them out there and retrofit that place, and then go back and take that old courthouse and open it up to the people within the county needs. Somebody needs an office space or something like that. That building's still good. We just spent a million and a half dollars on it a while back. What are you going to do? Just tear it down? It can be salvaged. This mold is, that's just hearsay. I mean, there's probably some mold there, but it's just to tear it down just because somebody's got a wild. For what they want to tear that building down, you can go out and purchase the Old Engels property for. For what it's going to cost to scrap that place and get it all tore down when it's all over said and done, I bet you we could take that money and go and offer that to those, her name is Teresa Wilmot, we can go make a substantial offer on that Old Engels property. It's all there. Infrastructure, water, sewer, pavement, it just needs to be cleaned up and fixed up and retrofitted to our needs. It's all there. Personally, I would not tear the building down and maybe rent it out to a business. Rent it out to somebody that needs a little office space. You take it in Atlanta now, they're building these high rises, and they're retrofitting the inside of it, and people are coming in there and renting that particular office. Haversham County could do that. But as far as tearing it down, I'm not really wild about doing it because it's a stable structure, and it's not the prettiest girl to dance, but she'll still dance, that's for sure.
My sons are products of Haversham County Schools almost their entire 12 years, and the older one is an attorney in another state, and I was visiting him the other day, and he lives two blocks from the local hospital in upstate New York. And it's a hospital that looks about the same size as Haversham County, and so just a mile from the Hudson River. It's a county that's very much like ours. And which is repeated all over the United States. We have these small county hospitals that have been there for many, many decades, still owned locally by the authority. And he said, "Dad, I just got elected president of the hospital authority."
Good for him.
So I said, "What's that mean?" He said, "Trouble. We're way in debt."
Yeah, that's true.
And I said, "Well, you know, when you broke your arm, our hospital back home is in the same situation." And I said, "What are you going to do?" And he said, "Well, we all want to keep the hospital, and we would all like to keep the hospital owned locally, but we're not sure we can do that." So tell me, Locke, what are your thoughts about the future of Haversham Medical Center?
Haversham County Medical Center is not a regional hospital. It is a county hospital. I believe the retrofit that they did was needed. When you have an emergency room, people can walk in there with no money, get serviced, and walk out and not have to pay a dime. They'll send them a bill, they'll send them another bill, they'll send them another bill. Sometimes you have to, in business, and this is one thing I have learned, in business, you have got to get aggressive on your bill collectors, I mean, collections. Especially, something like this, I see there's a problem in collections. You know, just because they come in and get serviced for free, that don't mean it's free. You have got to get in there and say, "Listen, you owe us. You know, you weren't complaining about money when you walked in, so we want some money." I mean, monthly, I don't care, but you've got people that owe $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 to that hospital, and they say, "Well, you can't get blood out of a turnip." And they're sitting on, you know, 50 acres of land or 100 acres of land and got a $20,000 fishing boat and driving around in a nice truck and a nice house, and that's unacceptable for me. If you have to go in there and take them to court, I mean, go after the money. That's one thing about small businesses that I've learned. You know, if you let people beat you out of money, word to get out, and then you'll have, you know, it'll be a fish fry. Everybody will be coming there to eat. And you've got to go after the money. The hospital, it's a business, you've got to run it that, and that's one thing I, you know, I think they really need to look at is collections. Salaries are another thing. You've got to pay good money to get good people, and I understand that. But Haversham County Medical Center's always taken care of my family. They took care of my father before he died. I just got my mother out of the emergency room Saturday, and they did an outstanding job on her, and I have no complaints. I've never had a bad thing to say about the hospital. There's a lot of people that say things about that. I don't get where they come from, but that's their opinion. But as far as I'm concerned, Haversham County Medical Center should stay a county hospital, but we just got to, we owe, I don't know, 20 million or whatever. Once the debt is eliminated, things will level out, and then you've just got to get your collections in order and...
So you're not interested in a partnership with another larger hospital or something like that? You're more interested in getting the debt collected to pay off the debt?
I would consider a partnership, absolutely.
Oh, you would?
But who is going to come in and take over something like that with a $20 million debt? I mean, sometimes, you know, the commissioners did it. We owe the money, so let's get up, let's pay it, you know, and get aggressive. They're talking about a $7 million administration building, they're talking about $4 million in the bank, you know, write those people a check for $8 million, and let's start paying our debt. You're not, you know, if you don't pay your debt, you don't get respected by nobody, and that's a problem. The commissioners are just kicking this can down the road, and you know, it wasn't even mentioned last night till I said so, and it's just pathetic. It's just pathetic. It just shows how, you know, they don't want to have anything to do with it. They say, "Well, that was here before I got there." Well, I'm sorry. It's a part that has to be addressed, and we have got to do that, and I will do it. I'll be at that hospital every day, five days a week, if not Saturday and Sunday, and I'll be walking up and down the halls and just looking at things and see how they think is run. If you want to find out how something is run, you go hang around there.
We have over 500 miles of roads in Haversham County at the same form that you just referenced. About over 400 are paved roads, and about 80%, and the rest are gravel roads, dirt roads. There are some people who feel like we need more of those roads paved. What are your thoughts on that, and what do you think about that?
If, it's economically and financially better to pave it. Concrete, asphalt, the technology's there, the county's got all this equipment, they got these drivers, they got just people that operate this equipment that know what they're doing. There's some of the finest people out there at that county shop. I mean, you can't get no better people. Danny Thomas, Hamilton, the rest of those guys, you've got John Stamey out there. These people are country folk, but they can operate a piece of equipment. Now, there's some people that do not want their road paved. Well, if you can't get the easements and can't get the signatures, you know, no problem. If that's what they want, fine with them. But if you can get them, pave it.
What do you think is the biggest problem facing the county? Biggest challenge, thing that needs to be worked on most if you're elected to office?
We've just got to stop this. There's just too much going on. We got the airport, we've got this. We're going to have to finish the airport. The airport is going to cost the taxpayers a chunk of money, and it's going to be a long time before the airport makes any money. You don't make any money off fuel. They think, you know, "Well, you do make a little money," but we're talking millions and millions of dollars we've invested in that airport, and it's catering to the wealthy, catering to the people. What is the percentage of people driving cars and light trucks compared, and registered cars, registered trucks in this county, and people that have registered airplanes? You know, it's ridiculous. We had other places to put our money. That Tatum man was running that airport, been running it for years and doing an outstanding job, and all of a sudden, these people come flying in there, and they think they know what they're doing. It's been the biggest screwed-up mess. It's going to cost us millions before it's over with, and it's going to be decades before that thing ever, you know, you've got to pay the debt first, and then, you know, you know what I'm saying.
So one final question for you, Locke. If you win the primary and you're elected in the general election, so how will Haversham County be a better place with Locke and the Commissioners Court?
There's more being a commissioner than just showing up for a meeting. You see them. As soon as that commission meeting opens, they're out the door. They hide. I'm not going to hide. There's things I want to do. There's things I want to get some of these debts paid. I want to get this spending under control. You cannot endet your children and your grandchildren. It is not our job. And leadership is important. You've got to, you know, people got to understand what their job is, they've got to do their job. There's a lot of people that are upset with what the county is doing right now. You don't, you know, that's where the bread is, is the taxpayers. That's where we get back to the business. Those commissioners know this money is coming in every year. They can estimate within, you know, $100,000 about how much money is coming in, and that's how they get their spending habits, and I'm not going to do that. I want to build up, eliminate this debt, let's get on the debt, pay the debt off, and work on it, just get on it, and let that be a big priority of my administration. I don't like debt. I'm 59 years old, and I have no mortgage, I have no credit card debt, no car payment. I've got a lawnmower payment and a little old piece of equipment payment, but everything I've got's bought and paid for.
One last question.
Yes, sir.
Are you a registered voter?
Absolutely. If you don't vote, you keep your mouth shut, don't you come complaining to me? And that's just the way I feel about it. If you, you know, that's what irks me more than anything. You've got people that say this and say that, and the first thing I ask them, I says, "Did you vote?" And they say, "Well, I..." And I say, "Uh-uh. Don't, you know, it's your right to do so, and that's one way you can say something, and you don't have to express anything to anybody, but just go in there and cast your ballot. And if you don't do that, it's, you need to think about yourself."
We've been visiting with Locke Arnold, a candidate for Haversham County Commissioners, District 5, and Locke, we wish you luck.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Have a great day.
You have a good day.
Welcome to Now Haversham as we review the candidates for the upcoming primary elections on May 24th today. We're speaking with Dale Green, candidate for County Commissioner, District 5. Welcome.
Thank you.
Dale, let's just start off. What formal education have you had that has prepared you for a role as a county commissioner?
I was born here in Haversham County. I went to school for two years at Haversham Mills School, private school. The next 10 years, I spent in the public education system here in Haversham County. I graduated from Haversham Central High School in 1972. I think government needs to be a lot simpler than what it is now, and I really don't think you have to have all kinds of degrees and stuff to be able to run county government. So your work experience and the things that you went through in life can teach you a whole lot about being able to govern and how you see things.
That's a great answer. What about informal experience, training you, things, experiences you've had in your life to prepare you to be a commissioner, non-formal classroom education? What things have you done that would prepare you to manage budgets or manage people or resources in our county?
My dad had a cabinet shop for years, Green's Cabinet Shop, and I worked with him for quite a few years. After he retired, my brother and I, we kept the business going, and we ran it for several years ourselves, and then I worked in other places where I was in positions where I had to take care of what people were doing and oversee things that was happening, such as the personnel and the customer care services.
We have seven municipalities in Haversham County. So how do you see your role? How would you see your role as a county commissioner in working as a team with these other local government entities, these cities?
I think the county government itself needs to be keenly aware of the cities and be a leader for the cities, because I think the cities really look to the county to see exactly what they can do and needs to be done, and I think the county can cause things to be simpler for the cities.
What challenges do you see facing Haversham County if you were elected? What are some of the first things you might focus on, and what are our needs currently?
One of the, one of the things that I have noticed for quite a few years, most of the people in this county that I know have really been concerned about Haversham County Medical Center. And I have, I was born at Haversham County Medical Center in 1955, but I have thought for several years that there is a pathway for us to join up with somehow Northeast Georgia Medical Center, and I know it's been discussed for a while. I've watched the Brazelton campus and what they've done down there, and I have noticed there are a lot of similarities between them and us, and I still believe that there is a way that we can work things out where we will have a better medical facility here in this county.
Are you a registered voter?
Yes.
Being a county commissioner takes up a lot of time. Do you have time available to fulfill that job?
Yes, I do. Right now, I drive a school bus full-time for the Haversham County Board of Education. That takes a couple hours in the morning, a couple hours in the evening, and then I have other times that I can be involved as a county commissioner.
I haven't seen this here in Haversham County. My family and I have lived here getting close to 30 years, but I grew up in another state and lived for many years in another state. In some cases and news stories, we see county commissioners owning or having interest in side businesses that benefit from decisions that Haversham, not Haversham, but county commissioners make, things they vote on that cost money and have to be funded. Do you have any side interests or businesses where you would benefit from if you were a county commissioner?
No, I don't. I am a member of the Torch here at this church and have been for, I guess, maybe 16, 17 years, but I am not a member of any of the clubs or things that's in the county, and I don't have any other interests besides that. My wife works at Ethicon. In my campaign, I paid the $288 qualifying fee, and I haven't spent anything else besides that, and I haven't asked for money from anyone, and I haven't taken anything from anyone, and I have enjoyed the way things have dropped into place that you could do stuff and do it rather simply, such as this interview.
Let me ask you, some people might not, might not know you, maybe they haven't lived here as long as you have, Dale. What are some things that you do in your life, interests, hobbies, volunteer, things that would help people to get to know you a little bit better?
Our grandchildren are very involved in the rec department, and here at the church is, this is a great ministry, and we are really pleased with what we've been able to accomplish and do here. And then, just driving a school bus and being involved with the county and being involved around the people, a lot of people know me from that.
What about the budget of Haversham County? Of course, voters are always wanting to see the budgets trimmed and the people who have to carry out the services, law enforcement, the judicial branch, things like that, probably often feel they don't have enough money. What are your thoughts about the budget and the funding, and how do you see that? Is that an issue? What do you think about that?
I think the budget is a real issue to most people, and the overall way that money is spent in the county by the county commissioners and the Board of Education has been of great interest to a lot of people, and it's something we have to look at very closely and see if there's not ways we can do. One of the first things I noticed when I began looking into the county commissioners spot was the fact that 56% of all of our property taxes are already gone before we even get to start spending anything. Somebody else is getting most of the funds, and when you're doing that, of course, you're very limited to the amount of money you're going to have, so you've got to be careful about what's going on. However, good government, I believe, is just like paying an electric bill at home. There are times you consume more, and there's times you consume less, and it may stay the same. A governing body, a board of commissioners should be able to govern. If it's less, fine. If it's the same, fine, and they've got to take responsibility even if it's more. And the people in this county are good people, and they understand if you can show them and tell them exactly what you need.
30 years ago, when I moved to Haversham County and was a gentleman with, a trimmer gentleman with more hair, I was in a musical by Michael Shirley in our town here that centered on the courthouse of Haversham County, the original courthouse with its clock and its tower. Now we've moved out of the middle courthouse in between those two, and it's sort of sitting, there are some offices, administrative offices located in the courthouse right now, but there is an issue on the horizon about what to do with that building, whether, well, I'll let you speak to that, what should happen to the older Haversham County courthouse?
I drive by there almost on a daily basis, and I had, I am not convinced that we can still, that we can't still make good use out of that old courthouse. I know I've heard, you know, different ones say that they did studies and stuff and found that, you know, it was just almost beyond use, but I haven't really been able to look at those studies, so I don't know how closely they were looked at. And sometimes, I mean, I don't even know who did this study. If it was somebody who's thought it was in their best interest to talk the people into tearing it down, of course, they're going to try to get you to see it their way. So I think we've really got to look at it and see, because to me, it don't look like it's beyond repair. It looks like it should still be a good facility to use.
We have somewhere between 500 and 600 miles of roads in Haversham County. Most of those, probably 80% are paved, and about 20% or so are not paved, they're gravel roads. There has been some discussion by some people in the county that we should attempt to pave either all the roads or at least more roads. How do you feel about that? What do you think about that?
Well, I grew up driving on a dirt road for almost 20 years before I got married, and, I mean, I was 20 years old before I got married, so I drove for about four or five years. A dirt road is tough to travel on. It's got its disadvantages for sure, and I would like to see as many roads paved as possible that we can, that we can afford to do.
Dale Green, pleasant to talk to you. Good luck in your race for county commissioner.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I'm Dick Stafford for Now Haversham, and today we're speaking with Ed Nichols, a candidate for County Commissioner, District 5. Ed, welcome to Now Haversham.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Let's talk a little bit about your past and formal education you had that made you qualified to be a county commissioner.
Well, I grew up in Clarksville, graduated from North Haversham, went to Young Harris College, then I went to University of Georgia. I left there after when I graduated and moved to South Carolina, and I worked for three different companies over 30 years in management, primarily in human resources and management training. I still do seminars for management, training, communications, speaking, public speaking, that sort of thing. So I have quite a bit of experience in my, in my past that I think comes in good play with the county commissioner. I was Executive Director of the Haversham Chamber of Commerce from 2002 to 2009, and we grew it from 240 members to about 600. So we were very successful there, and I know a lot of people in the county, a lot of the businesses through my chamber connections.
As an incumbent, you've already been working in that role on the commissioners, but we have seven municipalities, and they have their government entities or law enforcement, things like that, as well as the county. So in the past, some have said that these groups haven't been on the same team, although more recently, a lot of people feel that maybe we've worked a little bit better. What is your thoughts for the future in the relationship of our cities, our municipalities, and the county?
Well, you know, when I was at the chamber, we would promote Haversham County and our seven little towns, and each one can draw tourists, you know, for their particular things, like Clarksville's known now for having quite a few restaurants, Lula Falls for the views. But when I joined the commission, I realized that there had been some not-good communications, so we have really improved that, and our new county manager, Phil Sutton, has done a great job with that. We communicate constantly with the cities, we work together, we have meetings together. We have intergovernmental agreements among most of the cities. We have mutual aid agreements for fire and safety, so we're working very close, and we will continue to do that, probably even closer in the future, because as we grow, we've got to have water and sewer in various locations. The county is not in the sewer business, the county is not in the water business. It's up to the five towns that have that, and so we'll be working very closely with them, particularly when we have to run water and sewer to new industry or new developments, and the county will chip in and help pay for it. I mean, we'll partner.
Haversham County Medical Center is well-loved in our county, and my family, all of us, have used it one time or another and have friendships with many people who work there. But the county hospital, like many small rural county hospitals, has some difficulties, some real challenges. So what do you see for the future in terms of the county's relationship with the hospital and the hospital board here?
Well, we were in dire straits three years ago, really bad, and they had, they have a 38, we have a $38 million debt that we're paying off. But a recent article was interesting where some medical magazines said that, stated that probably any hospital with less than 100 beds will not survive the next decade. 100 beds will not survive the next decade unless they merge or partner with a larger hospital where you get more efficiencies. So we saved the hospital by assuming the debt, the county commissioners did. We did that by taking the buildings and the land and that's now ours, the county's. We assumed the debt. We restructured the bonds and lowered the interest rate. We're saving a million dollars a year in interest. Our payments are 2.3 million a year to pay off the bonds. We, I anticipate the hospital authority, who really manages the hospital, and we have some input with the authority. We appoint the members, of course. And we anticipate that we will be looking strongly at merging or partnering or affiliating with somebody. I know St. Mary's out of Athens has just taken Ty Cobb, I believe in Livonia. They've taken a Greens, built a new hospital in Greensboro. So we're looking to merge or partner, but we want to always keep Haversham's name on it. And we want to keep the deeds to the property so nobody could close that hospital. But it's still viable and it's a great hospital. My whole family's had surgery and everything else there. It's a great hospital. We just want to keep it and somehow survive over the next few years.
So that there might, I mean, you're well-known in our county, but there might be people who might not know you as well. So what about volunteers, hobbies, activities outside of the Commissioners Court, things that you've done in the time you've been here that maybe help you in your job as a county commissioner or will be if you're reelected?
Of course, my wife and I are members and one of my daughters is a member of Clarksville Methodist Church. I've been a member there most of my life. My parents came there in 1938 and joined that church. So we're pretty big workers in our church. Judy and I also, my wife, we deliver meals on wheels several times a year. We're involved in several activities. Soup kitchen, we've helped with that. And so my wife volunteers one day a week at our thrift store uptown on the square. So we're involved in a lot of activities and particularly revolving around our church. I also am involved with the rec department in sports, keeping my finger in that and monitoring what's going on with our recreation department, which serves thousands of children in our county. Great rec department. So I'm just involved in the whole thing, everything. I have the time now. I'm semi-retired. And so I get involved in everything that's going on in the county. Senior Senator, I go there occasionally and help serve lunch and do things, so.
Are you a registered voter?
Oh, yeah. Have always been. And there are 19,000 in this county, you know?
I know.
The problem we have is, I think, four years ago, only like, what, 7,000 voted?
I grew up in another state, but I brought my family here 30 years ago. And my children have grown up here and been to school here and have their own careers. But where I used to be a reporter in another state, the county commissioners off and on, for quite some time, would get into a little bit of trouble in that they owned their own businesses outside of being a county commissioner. And in some cases, those businesses flourished and made money from decisions that were made by the county commissioners. So do you own any businesses where you might profit from decisions you might make as a county commissioner?
No, I don't. I don't have any. In fact, thinking about our commissioners, I don't know of any that have anything like that going on.
Sure. Well, we do have some politicians in Georgia who, in the state legislature and senate, who do own businesses that profit from decisions they make.
I have a business at Nichols Consulting and I do seminars on management and communications at some of the colleges in Georgia.
Sure. How would, now, you've already been in the position, but let's just talk about the future. How would having Ed Nichols as the county commissioner make Haversham better?
I think one way is that I'm right on top of everything we're doing. We've got to have a new administration building, either fix the old one, which I really don't want to do, or build a new one, an energy efficient building. We've got so much going on with the airport. We're spending, the federal government is spending a lot of money on our airport. It's going to be a great thing. We've got so many things going on that I like to be involved with. We, for the first time, this past year, our airport made money for the first time ever. So we're doing a lot of things. We have contracts on land for development for the first time in many years. I could see us maybe buying another piece of land if we could get another contract. So we're, Haversham's going to grow. And I'd like to be part of it. Now, an important thing's going to happen in two years. In 2018, Haversham County will be celebrating its bicentennial. Haversham County, United States was only 42 years old when Haversham County was established. We're probably, I think, the 13th county in Georgia. So I would like to be on the commission two years from now to help publicize the bicentennial, to draw tourists to the county, to put us on the map, so to speak. And if you search the internet, you'll find it's a great, great resource for development, for tourists, when you celebrate a bicentennial, when you have festivals, parades, or whatever you want to do.
Finally, Ed, let me ask you a question. At the recent political forum, there was, this topic was brought up and you just mentioned it just a moment ago. And that is what to do with the old, I was about to say the old county courthouse, but it'd be the middle county courthouse. The really old one is no longer there. But what should happen to that?
I don't really have a conclusion at this point, but I think there's several options. One option would be, if we don't use it, would be to give it to Clarksville, to sell it to Clarksville, to tear it down, sell the land to somebody or give it to Clarksville. It could be made into a beautiful plaza or retail shops. Another option would be to try to market it to somebody that maybe wants to have a motel or hotel or something. So at this point, I think we're open to any option. And once we decide what we're going to do, then we've got to explore those options.
We've been speaking with Ed Nichols, a candidate incumbent for Haversham County, District Five. Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We hope you've benefited from these interviews sponsored by Now Haversham. And we want to remind you, be sure to vote May 24th.